Say it again.
Uh, yeah.
Hi Eric.
How are you?
How are you? How are you? Nice to see you.
Hi.
I'm glad we have a big crowd so we'll have a long meeting.
Yeah, well, you will, it'll be long on you because I have some responsibilities and contingencies.
Probably sort of nine forty tonight on the west coast. It's a little tough. Was it two fifteen last night?
Yeah.
We wasted a lot of the day.
For fourteen minutes?
Yeah, she said it was two fifteen.
What, didn't you? No, no, the bullpen gave it up after stellar pitching.
Well, they've been hot. That, that's Miami.
That series had lost enough.
Yeah, well. That would go on the other way.
Yeah, that in the first game and not ahead of what is on, yeah, they couldn't win both of them.
That's exactly right. Bullpen letting them down.
But they, best team in baseball, they played them.
Oh, oh, yeah. They, they, yeah, that would, that would be a great world series.
Hold, gents, wait it all. Hey, Mr. Cookup.
How are you?
Come away a bit.
I'm good.
You're a person.
Pardon?
You're a person.
Yeah, Bob's working outside.
Don't be just up here. You remember, the streamers can't see you.
So. Yeah, that's, and by like Diane, her and what I sent us to also said, thanks Mike, I appreciate it. So, so, you know, keep in, keep in touch with our, like, yeah. Uh, I think I copied Michelle. She can respond.
I mean, yeah.
I haven't seen Michelle.
Oh. Oh, thinking of, I sent you, uh, something I just had to see on MSN today or something, whatever. Something I've been thinking about for some years now. Our Pacific out of work junk. One example, that's Texas. There is a young man in, I think he's, uh, um, he's got this culture of typing. How to allow, you know, that he said, like, islands up there. And with this technical knowledge, I'm starting to collect this process. Just the waiting process, wait for hours. Um, you'll see the link I sent. Oh, okay. No, no, that was, I said, for this, for the trailers, they used a, um, a schematic and the ship out there. And this large room.
I knew you were nervous, I knew it was probably coming back. You're going down the line, how are you doing? Looking great. At the same time, I think twenty years ago. Oh, you definitely. We did Wildwood, Wildwood, Freshwater.
You know, I just said, is that Jenny earlier? I said, you look absolutely terrific, but look at that handshake, I mean, you're the best. Hey, you're chilling, Jenny. Have you met our, our, uh, no, one of those too, our new poll audience? We, we, we said to her, make sure you talk with Jenny because we want controversy in our phone.
I was just saying.
You too, dude. Yeah, that was, the rain too, rain. What brings you to, uh, the meeting?
Well, the thing is, it's hard. So, I'm sorry.
That's great. Ah, you still, you still got it. That's terrific. Great, great sound. Which is. No. How are you?
How are you doing?
Good. That was it last night, I watched about thirteen minutes of our way. Yeah, it was from Mark Stone, Havana Moon, uh, concert in two or three years ago. And it was all behind the scenes. When I was talking to a man in the office today about organization people, and I said, oh, here's his man. With his seventy year old, he don't play that music. And we're going to get up. And he, this was two years ago, he was moving those things, they all were, it was just, it was just, um, Ron, and Mick Jagger, and Charlie Watts, of course, and Bill White, of course, the saxophone, he killed himself. But then, you know, he's got a great backup, but the way he's got it, to me, is just, put it together and, and do it. I, you can tell that Jagger has modified his words, do something to it, but it all worked. And there must have been, there must have been at least a couple hundred thousand cubanos or probably hundreds there that night.
So what's being done? Having projects, why not?
Oh, the sets. Oh, is that right? That was when, that was some of the big show.
All right, welcome everybody. All seven of you that decided to come out tonight for various reasons. My former boss is here, he probably had nothing else to do tonight. And welcome to all you that are streaming tonight. Um, I'd like to call a meeting to order for the supervisor's meeting of Tuesday, August seventh. I appreciate if everybody arrives and enjoys the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I'd ask our assistant manager, John Oldshaw, to lead us in that this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The moment of silence for our troops, both living in these seats, our friend Carmen Batavia, who normally does this, is on vacation down in Wildwood, enjoying himself. So if you would take a minute to recognize our armed services, we'd appreciate it very much. Okay, thank you very much. Welcome everybody. For those that are streaming, I know in the past we've had some trouble with the sound, we think we've resolved some of it, we hope we have. If, um, tonight I'll probably do this for the last time, but we, since there may be some out there that have not seen us before and wonder who we are, I would like to have everybody introduce themselves and, and give their title to, to you folks out there, and then we'll move on. This will probably be the last time we do it. John, you want to start?
Uh, John Oldshaw. David Chewie, member. Mike Lynch, supervisor.
Rick, Rick Smith, township manager.
Marty Shane, chairman of the board this year. And next door to me would be Carmen Batavia, if you were here.
Janet Emanuel, supervisor and police commissioner.
Thank you very much, uh, that takes care of that. Uh, let me make it, the chairman's report's got three items on it. Uh, one, we met in executive session tonight, which seems like we do all the time anymore, to discuss the police labor matter. Probably most everybody knows the police contract negotiations are going on, and hopefully we resolve before the beginning of next year. Um, the board is also looking for residents for the pipeline task force. Applications are going to be able to be submitted to the end of August. That may seem like a long time, but we ran into a really serious problem of people being away and people being here. So we figured that when September gets here, everybody will be back, and we can, we can get water to chaos. So for those that are, and I know there's some people here tonight that have replied, we appreciate that. If anybody has any questions about that, uh, feel free to talk to Ricky about it and tell you what the situation is with that. Cause it's, we hope to have seven residents involved in that to, uh, work with, basically work with the supervisors in terms of the things that we should do relative to pipelines, um, in the future, based on some of the things that we've learned from the Sunoco situation, from the Adolphin situation and so forth. Uh, also, I, I need to announce that the minimum municipal obligations for various township pension plans and the negotiation fire plan, that negotiation fire plan, the minimum obligation is ninety-two thousand nine hundred eighty dollars. The township non-uniform defined benefit pension plan, that was what we've had for years, that's well funded, we have no minimum obligation there. Um, the defined contribution plan, the contribution there, the minimum obligation is eighty-seven thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars. And for the police administration non-uniform defined contribution plan, pension plan, uh, the minimum obligation is ten thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Uh, is there anybody in the audience that has any comments or comments or questions or anything about a non-agenda item? Ernie, come on up. Please come on up, uh, give your name very clearly and your address, and I know some of you have been here before, but nonetheless, we've got to let the people know. They're going to turn it on, I think, I think it's off.
You've got to switch, now to switch on the mic.
Switch on the mic.
Okay, John.
Okay, John.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I'd like some follow-up if you have about the pipeline issue. The first thing is, uh, the twelve inch pipeline. I, that's being repurposed by Sunoco, and I understand from the recent notes that uh, it could be open, uh, active by the end of August.
By the middle of August, yeah.
Middle, excuse me, the middle of August. Is that, so, is there anything happening about that, are they just going through?
I'll let Rick, I mean, I can explain, but I'll let Rick, Rick has been doing this right from the beginning, I'll let him explain what they were obligated to do and where we think they are today.
Based on our understanding, Sunoco, because they are reversing the flow, or depending if you read the other way, or they're changing the commodity being played. They had, they only had to provide PHMSA with sixty day notice to do this. As our, they have advised us, they sent those to PHMSA in mid-Jan, mid-June, and, um, they're in the process of doing whatever they need to do to activate that line.
The other thing, Ernie, just so you know, and the people know, back in two thousand and sixteen, they must have decided that this may be a possibility. They spent about thirty million dollars, uh, with respect to this section of pipe which goes from Elverson at the north corner of Chester County down to the, uh, elementary school in, uh, Middletown Township, and that's the area that, you know, what they call the twelve inch bypass. And, um, they had notified PHMSA and they had notified the PUC way back. Unfortunately, that was sort of a well-kept secret with respect to the public, and it wasn't until they filed the recent application with PHMSA uh, that, that it became known to everybody. And I think Rick was in a meeting with them and became the first person in Chester County to realize that they were going to repurpose the pipe.
So this is similar to what they did with Mary East One, when they repurposed it, uh, three years ago.
Yes. What they planned to do, a little bit different than Mary One, because Mary One was the whole thing, but this section, they'll be hooked up to the twenty inch section up in Elverson, and a twenty inch pipe down in, uh, Middletown Township, and the rest of it will be, the twelve inch will be in the middle. And that's what they're going to do, it gives them more time to figure out what they want to do with the horizontal directional drilling here in the part this being bypassed.
So speaking of two and two X, I, I, I know that the PUC is allowing them now to restart the drilling outside of West Whiteland. Where does East Ocean stand in this? What, what's?
Since Sunoco has told us they are reevaluating the STDs in this area.
But in other words, we, we, we keep asking to find out when they will start here, one way or the other. They have given us no indication whatsoever that they're, they, they know the answer to that, and their answer is the same as it is for other places, that they're reevaluating all, all the spots that there was horizontal drilling, to see if they want to continue that way or go into the, uh, open cut. So now, with respect to the West Whiteland situation, I believe there is twelve situations, they, they've got approval to start on eight of them. But I can tell you that the one where they had the problem with it is, is they did not get permission for that. When they're ready to do that, um, they will probably, when the DEP gives them clearance for that, they'll probably be able to start those other four. There was some discussion about whether or not all of them had to be ready before any of them were ready. Obviously, uh, the DEP and the PUC gave them permission to start on the eight, and that's what, so it's eight and four, we're still resting.
The, uh, right now, do we know if, uh, two is complete and they still have two X to do or, or?
No, oh, no, two's not completed in, in here, for sure. In fact, we already have about, Ricky, uh, we have about ten percent of the pipe installed in the ground in East Ocean. You see most of it lying across the ground at boat trade.
See, I don't know if it's two or two X, it's, I don't measure it, so I don't know which is twenty, which is sixteen inches, I don't.
Well, yeah. They want to put the twenty in first, then the sixteen now. It, it could well be, when they come back and start, because in this pipe situation, they, they may well put the both of them in at the same time, get done.
So they still have a lot of work to do in this township?
In this particular area to do. Not in the rest of the state, however. Anybody else? Okay, moving right along. Uh, the next item is emergency services reports, it's seven A, we know has none. In fact, there's none all the way across the board, including the fire messages report. That brings us down to item number eight, the financial report, John, you want to do that?
Yeah, I'm not going to run, run through every number in the financial report, it's just saying that it's been received, it was an unqualified opinion. Uh, we had positive net change in fund balance, so, uh, really nothing out of the ordinary to report there. I, I trust you've all read it cover to cover. And, um, and that's got it?
I got it.
We, we all have a copy of.
But it reads, it reads well, so it's, you know, these are very well done reports, they're not inexpensive, but they want to document, it says to the audience, that.
Thank staff and John and the director for doing a wonderful job with our, with our finances. Uh, the next item is item number nine, A and B, we've got them together, they are the treasures report and the approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any additions to the minutes or corrections to the minutes that went over in public, Janet has sent in to, John? Anybody have any more?
Not here.
No, no additions.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes of, uh, uh, July seventeenth?
I'll second that.
How much of questions from the board, from the audience? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Does anybody have any question on the treasures report with respect to items that are on it, in the treasures report?
John, just one question, please explain to me again, it says August second, two thousand eighteen, what period is this for again?
So this would cover the period from the Thursday before the previous meeting, so, when was it? The last meeting was, uh, July seventeenth, so it's gonna be three weeks. So it would be roughly July, uh, twelfth, let's say, until the Thursday before the meeting, this meeting.
Is, is it year to date?
No, no, it's that period of.
That would be the time.
Yeah.
It would, it would be helpful just to have that to keep, keep me in perspective when I, relative, because then I'll know the periods, they was just a one week period, and I can multiply it by four, look at the monthly, or, you know.
Sure, so what we can do is add something, is they cover in the period from
Yeah, perfect.
July whatever.
Yeah, perfect. Thanks, I have no other questions on the, uh.
For those that are here and for those that are streaming, what, what was just said was, we have to approve the payment of the bills before they're paid, other than in some usual situations like the end of the year, and that kind of stuff, where you've got to get everybody, everything done before we meet a reorganization meeting. And that's what you're talking about, we've had a fairly large gap since our last meeting, and that's why John is talking about four weeks, or three weeks of, of bills, so, once we do that, they can release them and off we go, unless we ask for one to be held.
Was there, was there a motion?
Mister Chair, in Carmen's absence, I will move that we accept the treasures report and graciously request that we pay the expenditures on the registry as presented.
Second?
Second.
How much of questions for anybody up here, from the audience? All those in favor of the motion for approval of the treasures report?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. The next item is their number ten, and fortunately for all of us, there's no public hearing tonight on any matter. I must tell you that, that makes some people in the board very happy. They're generally down to my left, I must say. There are some old business to consider, and, and the first piece of old business is, a, we had to take a look at our noise ordinance, um, particularly with respect to certain issues, and I, and Ricky's done a ton of work on this, and I'm going to ask him to bring us everybody up to speed on it.
Uh, currently the noise ordinance, uh, for construction activities such as Sunoco, uh, limits to sixty DVA, and it's an average based over a workday. That works, unfortunately for the Sunoco project, that only worked at one location, which is the one at Hershey's Mill, where we took the measurement behind the stone wall, behind the fence, the other side of the landscape. All the other locations where Sunoco was working, um, exceeded the sixty DB limit before Sunoco started working. So what we've consulted with our engineer, and we're suggesting that we amend the ordinance, and what we're suggesting is that to bring it to sixty-five DVA per day as the base, base level. Or if the base level is above that, then we get five DVA above that. And for the, and for the nighttime, we took the sixty, went down to fifty-five, and again, the same situation, if they were working, if it was something you had to work after night, they would have five DVA above whatever the background level is. If the boards are comfortable with this, we could advertise this and be in position to adopt it, uh, in two weeks.
Rick, I'd say that, one question, um, there was an issue, uh, in the hearings with Sunoco regarding terminology of LEQ versus DVA. So, some people have used those terms interchangeably, but I understand there's a distinction. Um, so, do most ordinances use the LEQ or DVA designation?
Well, I, I think the question, the DVA is, is a standard for measuring the sound level. I think the LEQ, and I, I believe our issue was that an engineer used an average, when he should have used the term LEQ. So I think going forward, they, when they do the, when they do the calculation, they have to calculate it based on the LEQ and not the average.
So are.
Yes, we, we just need to, we just need to make sure that when the engineer measures it, that he does, you know, yes.
The other thing too, just so everybody knows, um, the daytime time is reflective of when people are allowed to, to work, and that is from seven in the morning to ten at night. When Rick refers to the nighttime, it's ten at night to seven in the morning, so it's not exactly seven to seven. We have a long, uh, long hours of operation, um, it's for really, it's not for the benefit of Sunoco, it's been in the books for a long time. It's so that people that work and so forth can come home and, and do stuff, and do stuff on the weekend. Um, and, and so far, uh, Sunoco has not asked to do twenty-four seven, we don't know when they come back into, uh, operation, if they're going to or not. They are well aware that we had had conversations with them in the beginning, that said, if they want to do that, they should ask us then. And if in fact they wait until now, uh, we would notify the residents and there would be a meeting to that effect, that they would have to go through, putting in their reasons why, and we would have to have somebody to, uh, either agree or disagree with that, and give time for the residents to express themselves as to whether we should or should not, uh, give Sunoco, uh, the twenty-four seven operation. And it will be, uh, a fairly, uh, interesting situation is probably the way I like to describe it. We would probably need to go to Fugit High School, Fugit Middle School, and I would dare say that the room would probably be full. So, uh, we'll see what happens when Sunoco comes back, but right now, Sunoco works within the normal daytime hours of seven to ten, and they haven't even been working as late as ten, they've been working pretty much a twelve hour, twelve hour day, I must say all the time, but most of the time. So that's where we are, but in the process of citing Sunoco for noise violations, I think Rick mentioned this, we, we realized that there were places that the ambient, ambient meaning what takes place without Sunoco operating, was higher than the sixty that was in the ordinance, and that caused the problem. So this is a fix to that, and we think that it's going to be sustainable, and if in fact we have to cite Sunoco or anybody else, it'll be sustained in the court. So Rick did a lot of work with our engineer and our lawyers to put this together, and I think tonight, um, you're asking the board to have a motion to advertise this amendment, and, and we will do that, I will accept a motion to that effect.
I will make the motion, I appreciate the work of the manager, and, uh, during the research here, it's sensible, and, uh, it's, uh, uh, Sunoco just happened to be a, uh, a good vehicle to fine tune, uh, this ordinance, so I, I would make the motion that, uh, we authorize the staff to advertise this for consideration of a public hearing and adoption at a future date.
Any comments or questions from the board? Anybody in the audience? No? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next is item eleven B, for those that have our agenda, it's to consider the working without a permanent salary inspection reports, report. Uh, we a couple of months ago asked our people, our code officers to perhaps, uh, well not perhaps, to work on the weekend a few hours to see if in fact people were violating the, the, the requirement to get permits for certain types of activities. I'll let Rick do, uh, summarize what they found and what the recommendation is.
Uh, the code department went out, I think about eight, nine times, uh, June and July, uh, June, June and July. They spent twenty-two hours out there. Um, we came on Saturday, on Saturday, picked up two people, or two people, yeah, that were working without a permit. Um, during that, and, and I think what I'm thinking was they probably would have picked up during the week later on that week, but, um, during that time period, they also picked up, uh, seven normally, because they typically look for this type of work. Interesting though, they didn't find any cases where it was a homeowner that wanted to work on the side, it's all, it's professional contractor, either they forgot to get the permit, or they decided to get one. So the recommendation that Mark Gordon came back with is that, um, going forward, we would forego the Saturday, and basically just have the code department scheduler assign like a half hour week for each one of the guys, and basically they would divide the township into four quadrants, and then somebody hit one quadrant, one week, another quadrant next week. And I used a very, probably used the term devote more, devote a specific amount of time each week in-house during a normal workday, just to ride around looking for violations.
I think it was, I think it was a good report, it was, it was a good demonstration, uh, and, uh, it was, uh, it's something that I believe that, um, uh, made a good, good point, uh, that the staff during the, uh, week uh, is picking up most of these matters, and, um, uh, I really appreciate the work put into it, uh, as a demonstration project, and, and, and then, um, you know, the recommendation not to just carry it on for the sake of carrying it on, that there, it wasn't the value proved that we thought might be the case, so. Uh, really good work, I, I would accept the recommendation from my standpoint.
Is there a second?
I'd be a motion to accept the recommendation to, uh, uh, with the recommendation of the manager to, um... to disband this at the moment, but work on this kind of sector basis going forward.
Second.
How much of the board? Let me, let me make a comment. Our code enforcement officers, generally speaking in townships, they're, they're not the most loved people, so to speak, because they are very aggressive sometimes in, in making things happen. Quite to the contrary here, I have had the opportunity, maybe others too, where people have actually seeked me out to tell me how much they appreciate the cooperation that they got from our two code, two code officers. And it really is, is a welcoming kind of thing to hear that. And I think it gives rise to the fact that, for the most part, while it was a minor problem, we have no major problem with people not getting a permit. Now, people say, why do you do that? Well, the reason you do that is to make sure that people do things right. And it's a safety reason for doing it. Yeah, there's a cost to that, but primarily it's for the benefit of everybody, all the residents, in particular those who are having work done, for people to do it the way they're supposed to do it. And that's the fundamental basis why you have to have a code enforcement operation and the result, and the, and the permits that go along with it. So, I'm very much appreciative of that, and I'd like, Rick, to, in fact, I sent Rick an email before, and asked him to thank the code officers for the last time I found this out, which was just the past couple of weeks. So, it's very, it's very, I, I really appreciate it, and I know the other members of the board do, because really, those people really help our residents. I've seen them in action, and they know what they're doing, and they're very helpful if anybody has a problem in resolving that issue. And I, and I guess that's enough said, but I want to, anytime there's, you can say that publicly, it's really helpful. That's not to say that our other, other folks aren't equally helpful, but for the code enforcement to have people to be singled out is really something.
Yep, I agree. It's a very difficult position. You're right, there, there, when you have to enforce minimum regulations for building, sometimes people don't want to hear that. I think the codes department has been very consistent. A good example for, for a specific is, is a finished basement. It's very important to, a lot of finished basements, work occurs without a permit. And these years, when resale is occurring, any smart realtor or prospective buyer that sees a finished basement would be well advised to ask for the permit that finished that basement, because if someone is not licensed or properly skilled to do electrical work or other work behind drywall, et cetera, it can have a long-term impact and a, or a serious impact. So, this, you know, the, the programs that occur with building inspections and permits is really necessary, and it ultimately leads to our property values, it ties into it.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you very much. The next item is item twelve A, and that has to do with preliminary final approval for a plan for both subdivision and land development in fifteen oh six Meadowbrook Lane. I would say just two things in introduction. This is a, has been a lot of work by the planning commission. It's been a complicated situation, because it's a subdivision, which doesn't sound like a big deal. However, it is, it, it happens to be done on a flag lot, which becomes a much bigger deal, because there's things that there's, there's sort of, sources to be, be dealt with, there's work to be dealt with, there's other things to be dealt with. And are you, does anyone need to talk about that?
Yes.
Oh, how about that? I figured it was a nice person.
Well, you're doing very well.
Doing very well? Well, we are, I, I, I think that rather than have Ricky summarize it, it might be useful if you'd come over to the mic, introduce yourself, and at least give an overview to everybody that's here, as well as the board, before we, before we move on, in case there's any questions.
I have plans if anybody needs to see them.
But they had the plans.
We have, we have a move.
I know.
All right.
Unless you want to make it difficult on yourself, the longer you go, the more difficult the situation is going to be. Did I say that? I said that.
Who says when he has the order?
Good evening. My name is Shimon Guy of Guy Engineering, and I'm the engineer on record, sign on these planes.
Is that one? You're gonna get pretty close to it.
All right.
You're gonna get married to it.
So, again, my name is Shimon Guy. I'm the engineer on record, Guy Engineering. And I worked on these planes. And as you mentioned, it was a little complicated subdivision. It involves not only the two lots, or the one original lot that was subdivided into two, which had a gross area of two acres. When you deduct the right of way of Meadowbrook Lane off it, then it was slightly less than two acres, and we did not want to even to seek a variance for the one acre minimum requirement. So, we got into an agreement with the owner of the property next door, and purchased a slight, a small sliver of land, which doesn't harm the other property in any way. And so, we made the, the two acres which can be subdivided. If this is not enough, so, and this is, as you mentioned, a flag lot. So, we needed a couple of variants because of, of that, which we received. And the flag lot also, the, the pole of the flag also is a part of a joint common driver, which is a private road, serving additional properties further beyond this property. So, we had everybody to agree on that too. And you mentioned the stormwater, so I had a couple of discussions with the township engineer about that, especially with the impact of Act one sixty-seven regarding stormwater management. Again, because of the narrow flag pole, it was difficult to, to handle. We are also, as requested at the time by Mark Gordon, we widened the driveway, which added more impervious surface that we had to, to handle. So, we actually regraded and tilted the driveway toward the property so we can take this stormwater in. So, the stormwater design also is a little unusual, because in addition to the stormwater management facility, BMP as BP likes to call it, on the new property, you can see on the plan, there is an additional one on the other half, which remains the property of the homeowner, who by the way is here, Mr. Legenstein. And so, the purpose of that additional stormwater management facility, which will be also rain guarded, is to capture drainage area which we couldn't get into the other facility because of the grates. That also will help him whenever, if he decides to develop his own lot, that can serve him as well. So, one more thing. So, as you are aware, the planning commission recommended approval, and we requested one waiver, which is a combining of preliminary final.
I think everybody should realize that this, I want to thank Simone and all the folks involved in this, the planning commission, this was a really difficult thing to deal with. It doesn't sound that hard when you see the end product, but there's a number of houses all relying on the same, same way out to get to the main, main drag, which is Meadowbrook Lane. And, and there's a lot of complications that had to be worked out. And for those that don't look at plans regularly, this is a, fortunately, we got it on Friday or Saturday morning, I guess. Probably took some of us two and a half days to read the whole thing, so we knew what we were talking about. But I want to thank you and, and the rest of our staff for the work that they've done on this, to make this a nice situation out of a, this is kind of making lemon out of lemonade, or lemonade out of lemons. So, I want to thank you for that. There are easement agreements that have to be put into place. They will be reviewed, for those that don't notice, they will be reviewed by our solicitor. And we're not quite all the way done, but we're, we're pretty much, pretty much done. So, with that said, is anybody at the board have any questions on any aspects of this before we make the motion?
No, I have no questions. I, I think it's very well done. And if one of my colleagues wants to make a motion, I'll make the motion.
I'll do it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend that the Board of Supervisors grant the requested waiver and approve the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan for fifteen oh six Meadowbrook Lane dated August one, twenty seventeen, last revised six twenty-five, twenty eighteen, with the following conditions. One, all comments outlined in the July tenth, twenty eighteen Panone review letter be addressed to the satisfaction of the township staff prior to the issuance of building permits. Two, the applicant shall post the appropriate financial security and submit the land development agreement for review and approval by the board prior to the execution of the final land development plans. Three, the applicant shall provide a copy of the fully executed driveway access and easement agreement to the township in order to satisfy condition D of the zoning hearing board decision prior to execution of the final plans by the Board of Supervisors. Four, the applicant shall follow all federal, state, and local laws.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Janice, Janice, the liaison to our planning commission, do you have anything you want to say on top of any of this? I would, I believe, there's a letter here, in these type of situations, the Chester County Planning Commission has an opportunity to review the plans and make comments. I've looked at them, and I, I pick up right in this, that all those comments that they made have been taken care of. We appreciate that, along with those of our engineer. So, with that, does anybody else have any comments up here, or anything you want to ask? Any in the audience? All the question, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
See? See how easy it was?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Simone. Thank you.
Good luck.
For, for our, for, please give the plans back to Ricky, so that he can do what he needs to do.
Well, this way, Mr. Guy doesn't have to make new ones.
I don't have to make one.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
The next is item twelve B, and has to consider stormwater operating maintenance agreement and in-law suite agreement for twelve twenty-one Upton Circle.
Unfortunately, the cover memo that was in your package was for a previous project, but just, long story short is, twelve twenty-one Upton Circle, they authorized the chairman to execute the stormwater in, in, in-in-law suite agreement, which are our standard form, and the stormwater agreement for the addition.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll do it.
Second.
How much of questions for anybody up here?
I'm gonna recuse myself from the vote, as I know the property owner, who has my next door neighbor, terrific guy that he is, but I'm gonna recuse myself from the vote.
Yeah, Mike, I think this doesn't happen very often where somebody recluses, but I, there's no financial benefit to Mike, and I think he, he, if he feels comfortable reclusing himself, that's fine. He doesn't necessarily have to, even though he's very friendly with his neighbor, it doesn't really matter to make any decision. It's usually there's a financial interest into it, and there isn't in this particular case, but that's fine. And the other thing too, and it's important, is we have to have three people voting in the affirmative, but regardless of how many people we have here. So, Mike was fortunate enough that there's four of us here, we all agree, he doesn't have to un-reclus himself and make a vote. So, with that, I'll call the question.
Which for the record, I would do if it were necessary. I want to keep talking to my neighbor.
I'll buy you lunch, Matt. I'll buy you lunch.
That's a financial interest. No, that's no thank you.
You like to get along with him as seemingly as well as he gets along with you?
No.
All, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you very much. You can go home, and if you get there by nine thirty, you're west of Philly, you're supposed to be in this thing.
Or you can start work up until ten o'clock.
That's more likely.
Thank you.
See you guys. See you back at the forum.
For those that are interested, we're now down, there's, watching this on a streaming, we're now down to two people left. Next is item twelve C, which is to, what do I do?
We need to replace the overhead door at Public Works Building. Mark has got three quotes. As a lowest is from NASS Door Company, seven thousand thirty-two dollars.
I'd make a motion to accept the recommendation to award the work to NASS Door Company in the amount of seven thousand thirty-two dollars for place of door.
Anybody have any comments or questions up here? All those in favor of the motion? Aye. Thank you very much.
The.
Then it's next, this is item twelve D, and that's the recommendation to consider replacing the Explorer.
The Explorer. Mark has priced it out. We're recommending that we purchase a two thousand eighteen Explorer from Hoskins Ford for the sum of thirty-five thousand eight hundred fifty dollars.
I would, I, I, I think it's a good recommendation. I've, I was very surprised, I will make a motion, but I was very surprised at the differential between two CoStar approved entities. I, I was looking at the, the high bid from the Hondure Ford out of Mannheim, and I thought maybe that was a misprint, and it was thirty-eight thousand. But forty-eight thousand dollars and thirty-five thousand on a Ford Explorer Limited, I was, I was just amazed. But my motion would be to accept the recommendation to award the bid to Hoskins Ford out of Coatesville for the two thousand and eighteen Ford Explorer Limited.
Second.
How much of questions for anybody? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Just for the record, we, the Ford Explorer that we have now, we're actually sort of willing that to our Park and Recreation Director, who uses it most of the time anyway. And this gives us another vehicle, so the people that need to use a vehicle to go here, there, and everywhere, they have something to use. And this, this is a really, I think, good decision to order.
Yeah, I agree.
Next item is to consider the recommendation for a copier replacement. John, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, we received the, the current workhorse copier is at the end of its useful life. Reached out, tried to get quotes from a number of copy machine vendors. They all came in for the exact same model, the Rico sixty, sixty oh four, which is basically the legacy model of what we have, the next generation of what we have. It's a little faster, has some mills and whistles, but it's basically the same machine. Right now, we're paying three oh five per, per month for the lease. All of the quotes came back substantially below that. I'm recommending we go with, stay with Rothwell Document Solutions in Westchester. Rothwell has serviced our account since two thousand thirteen. They do a great job, very responsive, have not had any problems with them at all. They're not technically the low, the low quote, but, but it's, they're all bundled together. And regardless, it's about half the price we're paying currently for the lease.
Rick, just a question. I agree with John's recommendation, because when you, when you have a provider of service that does a great job, there is reasons to stay with them. But from a legal standpoint, if, if we give bids, they're a lower responsible bidder, do we have to take it? Or can we make these?
They're, they're all under CoStar, so you can accept any one of them.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to accept John's recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter into a lease agreement for a Rico Lanier MPC six zero zero four EX copier from Rothwell Document Solutions in the amount of a hundred sixty dollars per month.
Is there a second?
Second, Dan.
How much of questions for the board? Join us. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to ask one, one question of Rick on this. The fact that we're all CoStars on, on the CoStar program, pre-approved vendors for a specific piece of equipment, we, technically, we, we could have just selected one of those and, and, and purchased it, correct?
Yes, legally, but the board has always requested that we get, when we set possible three prices.
Yep. And, and that's smart, but I just thought I'd see if I can clarify that, if I understand.
I'd just add a comment too. Rothwell, we're not actually purchasing.
Rothwell, we're not actually purchasing through CoStar. We're purchasing it through a federal procurement program called US Communities. And I wasn't sure, we've never actually purchased anything through US Communities. I did check with our solicitor, and it's equivalent to CoStar, so there's no, there's no issue there. So it's just a different approach to kind of the same problem. And maybe we'll continue it in the future.
I appreciate that, too. Thanks. The next item, item twelve, is twelve S. It's a recommendation for a truck replacement. I will let, I will let Rick explain what's going on.
Actually, can I do this one? Because there's an error in the memo. I'd like to clarify that.
I noticed that.
So, yeah, it's actually, well, David brought it to my attention right now, but the gist of it is, is that we did budget for a new pickup truck, a Ford F-350. It's not actually fully depreciated yet. It's a, it's a two thousand and eleven, we bought it in two thousand and ten, so it technically has another couple of years. Mark's been complaining about it, transmission issues, that kind of thing. The fire company wants to buy it from us, and as you may remember, about a month or two ago, the board was not interested in, in, sorry, the fire company wanted us to give it to them, and the board expressed some reluctance about that. So basically, what this calls for is sort of a motion with sort of two possibilities. So both with trade-in, with selling this vehicle to the fire company for the purchase price, or without. So in the memo, in the recommendation at the back, it says, if the fire company purchases the vehicle for twenty-one, it should say twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars, then the price of the two thousand nineteen F-350 without trade-in would be, oh, no, actually, this is, wait a second, it is correct. It is correct, David. There is a problem there, it should say twenty-one thousand five hundred. So in other words, if we, if the fire company would give the right of first refusal to the fire company, if the fire company says, sure, we'll buy it, then we get, we get to the same point, it would be thirty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy dollars net, just with two transactions. If our company doesn't want to buy it, then it would be net of trade-in, which would be thirty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy.
I have a question. It's about the number that's seventy thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. When I added up, it was sixty thousand seven seventy.
I think you're a little behind there, John.
Oh, yeah, sixty instead of seventy.
I think we all saw the same thing, John.
Because you had to purchase.
The simple fact that...
I am humbled and ashamed to flunk that first grade math, but I will accept that.
John will be outside in the things that we, for all night long, so anybody wants to come along and talk to John.
I should disclose, too, that John, I'm not sure whether he's accepted it or not again, but he was to be teaching a class in finance and budgeting to Westchester University students, so you better bum it up before you start the class.
I talked, Mark had a nice conversation with me, Mark Miller had a nice conversation with me last night, had a number of issues. He does not believe that the fire company will buy this out, it will net us out to thirty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy dollars, as in this memo, and there is a recommendation to accept that, price from Hoskins Ford, and I would encourage their motion to be on the floor. Submove. Second?
Second.
Any questions from the board, from the audience? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Ricky or anybody else? Does anybody have any other matter?
I might. Anybody's like, put on my...
No. There is no any other matter tonight, which makes everybody happy, in particular Mike.
Yep, he's calm.
Mike, just keep hanging there, Mike, don't slow me down. The only thing, there is no liaison reports tonight for the benefit of Mike. There's correspondence of interest, and that has to do with conditional use notice for home occupation at thirteen thirty-nine East Strasburg Road. Is there anything that any other body on the board has for a clue of your...
I'd like if I might make a comment about that occupational use, what was in our packet. It's going to be before the planning commission, right, coming up? And if the planning commission could...
We already, we already saw it.
Okay, I missed that. Here were, Janet, maybe you can answer these questions. When the application, this is the one that has to do with a home occupation of a scuba, sales of scuba and related equipment and related clothing and the like. And that's fine. It says here, this business will not create and or store any hazards to the public and will not produce any safety issues to the public. Only question I had is, are they going to be storing oxygen tanks or other compressed gases as part of the business?
No.